Call this meeting a ward please stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the recent passing of Councilman John Barnhart. Please take your seats. Uh, roll call please. Iser. Savage.
Here.
Procius here.
Brumbault here.
Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? Alright, I make the motion of approval for the minutes and reports, minutes from September 8th meeting and report from the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, code office, health department, parks and recreation, and planning commission. Do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Iser. Uh, moving on to seat a cog. Jamie.
Good evening, thank you. Um, tonight we have our final public hearing for the twenty twenty five we develop a lot grant program. The city's allocation for twenty twenty five CDPG is three hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. The projects selected for funding include the curb cuts, bay one for twenty five thousand, fire department air packs, two hundred and seven thousand sixteen dollars, straw alley improvements at twenty six thousand nine hundred, and administration at fifty thousand. Tonight we will also review the resolution to submit the application. So as part of the application document, there's a resolution to be adopted by the city when we go back into the regular meeting. Basically stating that they're wishing to submit their application to D C E D for the CDPG program. They've done their citizen participation effort. They have the legal authority and responsibility under Act one seventy nine to apply for these funds. They have, are familiar with the program requirements and that they have authorized the the mayor to sign all of the documents. And that this resolution will allow them to, or requires them to repay funds for any ineligible program losses. So as I said, when we go back into the regular meeting, council will take action to approve that resolution. The second resolution that we always uh go through at this public hearing is the fair housing resolution. So Summery has adopted a fair housing program and they do not discriminate in the sale, rental, leasing, financing of housing, or land to be used for the construction of housing, or in the provision of brokerage services. Does this race, color, sex, national origin, religion, familiar status, handicap. This discrimination is prohibited under Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty eight. And this resolution also allows, gives direction on what to do if you need to report that there has been any discriminatory actions at the city. If you do need to make any sort of reports, it goes through your city clerk's office. And the third resolution we do every year as part of the final hearing is the five oh four resolution. Section five oh four is a program that's spread across all federal programs that designates a person or a office in the city to handle any sort of complaints again about accessibility of city-owned facilities and programs. The city clerk is is going to be designated as the city of some very section five oh four compliance officer. And there's a grievance procedure that outlines how to handle any complaints that come in. Are there any public comments on the twenty twenty five CDPG program? Here, we can adjourn the ears.
Alright, thank you Jamie. So I re-adjourn our meeting to vote on the following same proceed a cog. So the following, uh, the twenty twenty five CDPG final hearing, resolution to apply uh twenty twenty five dash zero two two, fair housing resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two three, uh, section five oh four resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two four, uh, section five oh four plan and a grievance procedure, and the five, section five oh four plan of guidance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just moving on here, just one quick announcement so the public is aware here. Um, with the recent passing of Councilman Barnhart, we had to appoint different, and councilmen to be in charge of different departments. So, uh, Councilman Brumbault, uh, stepped up and said he'd like to take over the code office. Uh, Councilman Iser has just moved for the sake of the end of the year to oversee the street department while reporting back to council on what is needing to be done down there. So I just want to let the public know of that. Uh, moving on to whole business here, uh, second reading of bill twenty twenty five dash zero five, the repeal, chapter eight, uh, article eight of the city administrative ordinance. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to hiring two police officers. I just want to table that to later date here because the testing didn't come back as soon as we liked. I just want to table that to a later date. Do I have a second to table?
Second.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius. Yes. Uh, moving on to Councilman Brumbault.
Okay, I'd like to uh make an amendment here for the second reading of bill number two zero two five slash oh four. To amend the shade tree ordinance.
Second. Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Brumbault.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for uh the uh addition of Madison Mullins, Troy Willard, as members to the shade tree commission.
Second. Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Alright, moving on to new business, uh, staff clocking, that's digital scheduling. That should have had under discussion, but uh, in the meantime, we'll have all the departments go down to the police department, check out the system, see if they understand it, see if they like it, and just uh, maybe that's something we can vote on at the next council meeting. So that was my fault. That should have been under discussion. But uh, moving on to the language interpreter through Exxon, the chief spoke about that previously at the work session about how that will help uh, bridge the gap between the language barrier that our police officers may come across when they're out uh, with citizens. So I make the motion to go through the language interpreter through Exxon for the amount of four thousand dollars a year. Do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to police accreditation through Lexi Paul. Once again, this was spoke about in the work session, how this will be moving our police department forward, uh, having the same standard of the state police, and also by getting accredited, will bump us to the front of any type of grant list that we are applying for grants above any other police department. Uh, there's, there's no local ones here locally that are accredited, so we've been setting the standard that, and following the standard by the state police. So do I have a second to go for the accreditation? Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to selling the police U T V for twelve thousand two hundred. So we originally had a minimum bid of twelve, uh, fifteen, was it fifteen? Sixteen thousand. It did not reach the bid. Uh, Steve did talk to chief about we could go with the twelve two. Uh, they both felt that that was the best price that we were probably going to get for the U T V. So I made the motion to sell the U T V for now twelve thousand two hundred. Did we put towards what chief? I forget what you said that.
It'd be towards progress here for accreditation for uh, for these plans.
Alright, so I make that into form of motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to advertise a two thousand eighteen Ford Fusion that has fifty five thousand miles. Put on municipal bid for a reserve of fifteen thousand dollars. Do I have a second? Yes. Oh, sorry Jim, we wanted to change that in, uh, we wanted to change that to fifteen thousand because that's after the chief did more research. He figured it'd be worth at least fifteen thousand, if not more.
Second.
Fifteen. Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to resolution twenty twenty five dash zero twenty five, legislature for grant applications. Uh, we need to have this uh, in an official vote, so we have different individuals from each department so they can sign off on grants. And they are Robin Garenier, Brandon Huner, Renee Duran, Jeff Verle Husky, and Steve Weller. Do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Alright, moving on to the camera system and other access controls. This will be finishing up the, we'll call it the back half, the city hall on our city hall remodel and the camera system. We spoke about that in the work session as well. Do I have a mo, guys, do I have a second to finish that camera project? Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Iser. Brumbault.
Yes.
Alright, moving on to camera system administrator. So we need to vote to put one individual, I won't say in charge of the camera system, but one individual who can access into the camera system and then also then be able to designate other users, supervisors, councilmen to be able to do that. I mean, uh, I think we spoke to a couple of people having Robin in the front office be the said vote person, but we, if anyone has anyone differently want to nominate to do so, but once again, she's just the person that has the username and access that she can give the rest of whoever else needs it. Correct. So that's, second. Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Iser. Brumbault.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on to bill twenty twenty five dash oh six, please mention, let's have Joel talk about this one quick.
Okay, um, the resolution that we're talking about the bill, um, is allowing officers to purchase retirement time based on prior law enforcement service. It's the same thing that we already do for military time, and what it does is it gives police department the federal ability to attract experienced officers because guys with experience are going to be able to buy back some retirement time from somewhere else. There is a sunset on this ability to do this, and the dates that are specifically set forth in the ordinance that is in front of me may actually change, but we can do that between the first and second reading. I learned that on Friday that they may need to change from a sergeant or sergeant to a black and purple side, what is it?
Yeah, I had to give you a call.
Yeah, you did. Okay, so that, so that will change, but other than that, I think that basically it's just something that lets the guys buy back prior law enforcement service. Oh, that's it.
My concern is what's, how's that going to affect pensions? Has anybody done that study?
I didn't do a study.
I mean, it's similar to like when they buy back military.
But now we're buying time from another department coming to us?
Yes, I think you would explain that um, solicitor at least is, it was enacted by Governor Shapiro.
Right.
Said it was written into.
This is just mean law that they can, they can do it.
I know they enact things that doesn't benefit the pension fund.
Right, and it basically, so what it be is the officer will basically buy and pay in a certain percentage, and there's actually a, there's a quota.
So they would buy back, I mean, so if they were, I'm making this up here, so if they say they're bringing ten years of service, they'd have to buy the ten years of service to pay into what they would have paid if they were here.
And four point five percent on top.
Yeah, so they'd have, so if they bring in ten years of service, they'd have to buy those ten years of service plus the point, was it four?
Four, four, it's four point five percent.
Yes.
I think some more time should be spent before we go pension. They're very critical. Right now we have the luxury of not being paying into the police pension because the uh, you already banked the job that you've done the last twenty years. That's my concern.
And I don't want to, I'm not going to enter an opinion on the subject, but I do have a question. Because there's a sunset on the ability to do this, with tabling it for tonight, do you know, uh, chief whether that would negate the ability to move forward with the thing in the future?
No.
Okay, so there's, the, that's not going to stop us. We're not going to run out of time?
Oh, no.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Alright, so with that being said, I'll just table this to be more information put on it, and then we can revisit it again.
What, what information do you want?
Well, and before we do that, yeah, if, if I may.
Uh, no, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, would part of your motion to table this be to have it looked at by our auditors or people?
Congress secret.
Yeah, Congress secret. And they'll, that's what they think, yeah. Is, is that part of the motion that you're making?
Yeah, I'll take, yeah, okay. No, I didn't, who does? Okay. Jim made the motion, I'll second.
That'll get it done faster.
Yes. Brumbault.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on to bill twenty twenty five dash oh seven, meaning the bike ordinance that was referring, uh, chapter sixty one, the first reading that was referring to the electric bikes that we spoke about before. Do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Iser. Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Uh, moving on, hiring a part-time officer chief, if you just want to speak about him briefly.
Yeah, Officer Ethan Roben is a full-time officer in Chemokan. Um, he basically comes with the experience of a city background, uh, third-class city background. Um, they're very good in the Chemokan area, but um, he wanted to try some different areas out and the like community would be a great asset, uh, great with drugs, community oriented, community policing. He's all around, good guy.
Question, anyone?
He's getting paid the twenty, twenty.
Alright, any other questions, anyone? Alright, so I made the motion, uh, to hire a part-time officer, Ethan Roben, at the part-time rate of twenty dollars an hour. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Brumbault. Medtech.
Medtech. Under fee schedule, uh, I'm not exactly sure in the fee schedule whether it went up or whether it did not.
Yeah, Jim, I think they have a normal increase of like a normal two percent every year that we have built into our budget.
Nothing.
No, nothing, nothing drastic, no.
Yeah, well then, uh, I make the motion to accept the fee schedule.
Second.
Question, Jim, do you do me a favor? I was reading, I'm not sure where I seen that, Medtech had did some work, some projects in the last month or so, and there was different fees of, I think it was a couple of thousands for this one, this one, this one. Make sure we're getting reimbursed for those, because whatever we're going to work for, uh, they're supposed to be reimbursing us to a cost incurred going to project.
Take care of it tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Alright. Jim made the motion, second. I'll second. Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
I'm moving on, Councilman Iser.
Yes, they worked the contract to Ross Charles, some thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars in removal trees in Susquehanna.
Second. Brumbault.
Excuse me. How many trees are they removing?
It's in the twenties. Every tree on Susquehanna is coming out, Jim.
For the, for the restoration of the street.
For Susquehanna.
What was the fee again?
Thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and during the bids and next poses, it was about thirty-five thousand dollars, and then there was a couple in the fifties.
Yep.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Iser.
Change order on the P P W bill, uh, the decrease of eight, or student sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. Steve, what was taken out there?
Uh, we are supplying a lot of the different, whatever we can do to help the contractor, we're doing, paying me a lot of this stuff that, that they were going to, uh, such as the concrete base around building and such. There's, there's a lot of work, work around, whatever we can do, we'll start all that down.
I shall second. Savage.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Iser.
I heard Doug Dorman at eighteen dollars our part-time as needed to rent.
Second.
Thank you.
Savage.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Selvin Truck, I'm sorry.
No, keep going.
Selvin Truck, three-three, P P W of two thousand nine F three fifty.
Second.
Thank you.
Wait, hold on, so as in, as in sell or put on municipal bid, or?
Well, municipal.
You have a reserve, like, so whatever you get, you get?
Whatever.
Alright. Brumbault.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Councilman Savage.
I would, uh, so a few months ago, we discussed the um, transfer of money to Summery Fire Department, so I'd like to formally make the motion to transfer fifty thousand dollars to the Summery Fire Department for consolidation.
Second. Brumbault.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Savage.
Um, I would also like to make a motion to designate Lisa Persia Martina for the tax collector committee, and also designate Brian Manning as her alternate. Uh, Brian Manning was going to be our alternate, he's going to be at all the same meetings, and Lisa expected to be there right, and gave in contact with Brian. So that's the motion.
Second. Iser.
Yes.
Procius.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Um, I would also like to make a motion for the approval of abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars eighty-six cents, liquid fuels in the amount of six thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars twenty-eight cents, private grants in the amount of six thousand ninety-six dollars twenty cents, and payroll in the amount of seventy thousand two hundred six dollars twenty-two cents, and seventy-one thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirteen cents.
Procius.
Yes.
Brumbault.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Iser. Uh, moving on to discussion topics. Uh, something we had to bring back up here is LERTA. Obviously, that was like the tax forgiveness for some of the properties that came here, and a lot of, some of the properties are coming. Their, their timeframe is coming to an end here, so we'll have to make a decision here moving forward on what we want to do. Uh, the one example is the Summery Hospital that be coming up here maybe the end of this year, if not early next year for sure. So like I said, we need to make a decision on what we're going to do with some of these properties with LERTA that their timeframe is expiring.
Well, I'm going to ask you about that, and the question I would have is if they're, if they're collecting rent at, at one of the properties, are they paying taxes to the city whatsoever?
I mean, probably not right now because they're under that LERTA umbrella, but like I said, when it comes to.
Are they licensed renters?
Yes, they are licensed renters. Remember you asked me, yeah, did they get the proper permit to have, to rent out that building? Yes. But like I said, when we revisit the, uh, for LERTA, maybe we could look into, since it is bringing in revenue, maybe they won't get the LERTA application again. Any questions on LERTA, anyone? Alright, uh, moving on, uh, for the PD grants, just want to give a heads up on the grants for the PD. Uh, we did send Renee, and Jeff was there, and also Cheryl was there, I think a couple of weeks ago, to a training from Senator Linda Schlegel Culver about, you know, municipal grants. And Renee came back with a lot of good information on grants that we can be applying for that, you know, that we've never applied for in the, in the past. So like I said, I just want to let the council know that Renee, Jeff, and Robin are, you know, attending these grant trainings to help, you know, help offset the cost of the PD department. So any questions on that, anyone?
Thank you.
Alright, and then moving on, just want to give everyone a heads up as well that, uh, I know, you know, Jeff took upon his shoulders to take on the community service program. Uh, right now, we log over twenty-five hundred hours of community service to the different organizations and different people looking for community service hours, and we're just putting a grant into the deck and seeing to help us continue, uh, to keep doing those things to help, you know, cut down on labor costs of the city. I just want to give the council a heads up that we are applying for grants to, you know, keep doing the community service program. Any questions on anyone? Okay, uh, moving on to IT computers and phones. So this is something we're going to have to get here eventually, probably by the end of the year, if not beginning of next year, with converting from uh, infrared over to inotech. So I just know the chief recently got a quote from inotech on, you know, the price of phones and computers and things like that. So I think, is this something we gotta be mindful of? It's not going to be a very, excuse me, cheap bill when we actually have to convert over. The one thing I know the chief is doing next week, you're coming up here, sitting down with inotech and seeing, okay, hey, you gave us the Cadillac of prices on things, and we don't need the Cadillac of phones or computers. What do we need for our specific department and go from there to help cut down on those costs?
You also have to do a lot of what we, I just saw that, because they went here for everything.
Exactly.
Everything we're going to have to prioritize it.
Yes, and going back to seeing what we, you know, what the usage that we need in our computers and in our phones, once again, we don't need the Cadillac of phones, we're just, you know, calling in, calling out our transitory phone calls.
I think that's what you talked about, I think is, is that a lot of the stuff that we have in this home, we don't need, like, so and when, when in tech's given us prices, of course, they're going to give us, you know, the people they want top-notch. So let's, let's find out intro cost versus what the Cadillac cost.
Yeah, so it's just something like either way, that's going to be a bill that we're going to have to take on here the next couple of months when we convert over. So it's just something like.
The phones, we're probably going to have to, it's the computer systems, because they're trying to replace everybody, so we're going to have to put always to newest and prioritize who's being done when, because we're not, we, we can't do what they're feasibly asking us.
Yeah, and it goes back to, you know, it's one of these things we put in all for years, and like, they're going to give us strategic, a strategic plan to say, hey.
And then we're, we, we put it in order and we work it for it.
Exactly, so I just want to like counsel where that, so when, I won't say a bill comes across, if a bill does come across, you know, we can't be shocked, because it's not going to be small. Alright, any questions on anyone to the IT stuff, computers, phones? Alright, uh, so just moving on, um, the hard light and the fire department consolidation, um, Councilman Barnhart was on those committees, we're probably going to put name Councilman Brumbault overseeing the code to go into those committees, that, you know, to report back to councils. Anyone have any issue, uh, with Councilman Brumbault there? Alright, and then Councilman Brumbault, you're up, sir.
Okay, um, we're going to have a walk-around, not from, with one or two people. Everyone in the code office is going to be in the walk-around. We're going to start next week and continue until the city is covered. Uh, there's been a lot of errors, there's been a lot of things missed. I can't blame anybody that works in the code office because they were not properly trained. We do have people that come in to, uh, help train them so they know what to look for. Like I said, there's a lot of good people in there, but they just didn't know what to look for or how to perform their duty. And also, uh, overtime has stopped in the code office now. The only person getting any overtime will be the young lady that comes in, that unlocks in the morning, kind of fifteen minutes early, and also locks up at night. Other than that, overtime's done, which is going to save a ton of money.
That it, Councilman Brumbault?
That's all.
Alright, Councilman Iser.
Yes, uh, May the fifteenth to the seventeenth, the two thousand twenty-sixth, Ink to Rent, if you're looking through the tattoos, that's when we want to sign up.
Jim, are you going to be the first one on the schedule this year?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, moving on to announce, anyone else for discussion topics? Alright, moving on to announcements, uh, Fire Police Halloween Parade is October sixteenth, starting at seven P M, uh, the normal route. Uh, the police department and friends of tr- trunk and treat and touch truck will be October eighteenth at six P M to nine P M at Niners Parking Lot. Chicken Lee five K low run will be October eighteenth, starting at five P M at the Chicken Lee Sports Complex. Uh, the John Barnhart Memorial Car Cruise will take place on October eighteenth from four P M to nine P M. If you have any questions, call Brandon Regal. There'll also be activities there for the kids with the pumpkins. Uh, haunted city hall, Hall of Treats is October twenty-fourth from twelve thirty to three thirty. At city hall, call Jeffrey and Robin if you'd like to assist. No chicken on me is on a half a day that day. Pink at Ink to Rent in the Sesko Hannah Valley Versus the liners on October twenty-sixth at four oh six P M at the Ice Hanger Rink at two forty-nine Morel Drive. Next city hall council meeting will be October twenty-seventh at six fifteen. We're also going to have a budget meeting prior to that at five o'clock. The Stop the Bleed will, training will take place on October thirtieth at the council chambers. Everyone is welcome, you must register or, and the trainer is Sam Spiegelmeier. And Trigger Treat will take place in the city of Summery on October thirty-first, citywide from six to eight P M. Is there any other announcements by anyone?
I just have a question, if you can, for Brumbault. Would, would they say, Joe, with no overtime, does that affect them coming out if we call them?
No, that's only on the.
That's a vital service.
No, that's only on the normal day-to-day operations, like, you know, occasionally like that, yes.
Sure that we're not going to get denied somebody coming out.
No, no, not like that. Any other announcements by anyone? Alright, at this time, is there any public comment at this time? I'm going to start in the front and work my way back. Al?
Couple things. You mentioned public readings.
What was that, I'm sorry?
They're not very public because they're not ready council. So how can we get copies of them so we can look at them, uh, to know what's in them?
Al, any document? Al, any document that you want to see, you can come in the front office, see Jeff or Robin and say, hey, I want to see whatever it may be, and we'll happily give it to you.
Okay, the second thing is Dollar General parking by delivery trucks.
On, on the alley, I, I, on the alley, correct?
They usually, they u- they usually park on Woodlawn Avenue, but they block the entrance to the, um, Edison's Parking Lot. And sometimes they even block the exit, uh, from that. Now, Woodlawn Avenue is two lanes wide. They should park over on the Burger King side, which would allow traffic going, uh, what is it?
Towards Fifth Street.
East or whatever, to pass by there. All they're going to have to do is walk a couple extra steps more. But, uh, what they're doing, many times I've been blocked from entering the parking lot because of those trucks in the way. And they're fifty-three quarters, so they could block both, uh, driveways. Something needs to be done about it. And I think they're probably parking and blocking the driveways illegally when you know.
Alright. What I can do, Mayor, is I'd like to speak with the Dollar Store Manager tomorrow and make sure that there's at least one opening, um, that they get through. But I think, um, wherever parked at, it, it's more feasible for a business to unload and unload, drop, load and unload. So I can ask, what I'll do is I'll just tell them, you have to leave more than one open, and I'll speak with the manager tomorrow.
Yeah, and like I said, it may be one of their things that they, I'll call Dollar General, while they have to park next to the curb, but, but like I said, just give them a, see what they say and we can go from there. Does that work, Al? Can you, the chief go down and talk to Dollar General about it?
What's that?
The, the chief is going to go down and talk to Dollar General to see what they can do about it.
Okay, because they park on the Burger King side, there's plenty of room to pass.
Yep, okay, we have a lot of the chief's downs, okay?
Because if you win the exit entrance and give up to the other end, it is one heck of a job to make a K-turn and get turned around.
Alright, we'll look into it, Al, thank you. Any other public comment? I'm going to go in the second row back, ma'am, I don't know your name, so please state your name.
My name's Becca White, I live in Sunbury. Um, I had written a proposal to have a crosswalk place between Wise Markets on Fourth Street and the Plaza on North Fourth Street. There is no safe crossing point from Packer Street all the way down to where Wawa is going in. Um, I did start a petition and I succeeded in getting three hundred and twenty-three signatures.
So you want to see what we're at on it?
Yes.
Alright, so, Steve, I'm going to turn this over to you.
I have, uh, a contact, it is not my road, that's Pendott Road, so it's not a city road.
That isn't correct, sir.
Excuse me?
That isn't correct, sir, I just...
That is not incorrect, ma'am, that's a Pendott road.
Wait, hold, hold on.
Just, let me just, let me, let me guarantee you I know what I'm talking about. That's a Pendott road, man. We've talked to them, okay, I've talked with Pendott.
We realize, understand, I've, I've got a petition, I've talked with Pendott about it. It is a very difficult situation for many reasons. First off, there's no, we don't have any right-of-way down there, it's not our street, it's not a city street, it's a Pendott road. Secondly, there is no pedestrian walkways in any of the parking lots in any way, shape or form to take people to or from. Thirdly, we don't have any ADA access across anywhere there. It is, it would take a fairly monumental effort to produce this and do this, and on top of that, we'd have to first off, go to Pendott and get a study performed by them, they would already do that. And then we would get the wheels going, then we'd have to look into funding, then we'd have to look into, well, where, where are the people going to go? You just can't drop it into a resident or a business parking lot. There has to be a residential walkway somewhere in there. So I understand, I get your point that a, a crosswalk would be nice to have there, but it's a very involved and common process to get to that point, is what I'm trying to tell you. So we've, I've talked with Pendott, they are going to look into whether it's even feasible on their road. That's what it stands.
Ma'am, uh, one person who could help you more than us, since it is a Pendott highway, is possibly going to talk to Representative Mike Stender about it. Because as Steve said, like, there's a lot of things that need to get done that are, are, are out of our hands and he'd be able to have more input on trying to get those things done that Steve spoke about. So possibly going to see...
And with, with Pendott still, the, the owner still falls upon municipality to do it.
Yeah.
To, to install and maintain the crosswalk, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, but...
So Pendott's going to take it back and say, listen, you know, Representatives Center can go to them.
Yeah.
He's going to take it back and say, it's a municipality's problem to install and fund and, and design and all that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it is their road, what we'd be on the hook for doing.
Yeah.
And then like I say, once you get there, whether you're going into Viner's Parking Lot, going into, to wherever you're going, they're all commercial parking lots over there for particular traffic, and there's absolutely nothing over there for pedestrian traffic. So it'd be, you'd have to work with everybody.
Yeah. Please state your name, ma'am? Yeah.
Uh, Lindy Lloyd. Um, so me and Jamie were here tonight, we, um, were aware that there were some, um, benches that the city had, and we were here to ask if the city would be willing to donate, um, a bench to put down at the Liberty Tree that my dad was so proud of, that little tree down there. Um, we would be willing to, uh, pay for the engraving on the little plate that goes on to it, um. Basically, that's it, that's the whole question.
Well, Lindy, we already discussed that, even, we discussed with your father when we were up there, positioning the tree. So, but there's some landscaping thought has to be into it, I was bringing Lloyd's in and let them lay things out because of that bench, there has to be some, part of a walkway there, so. Yes, but it's going to take some time to get things put together.
And, and that's, that's fine, it's a very tiny tree right now. Um, but, uh, but that was, that was what we did, Jamie had, Jamie had that idea, because he drove by that tree every day since it was planted to make sure nobody messed with it. Um, he detours to, to that little tree every day, um, he just worried about it being down there, so, uh, so I thought that I would come with her and...
And Steve, I talked about, we're going to put some, something around it for next year's grass cutting, so it doesn't get clipped like you mentioned, but like I said, Lloyd's has more work to do for us this year. And then Jamie can spend some time and come up with an overall plan.
Yeah. Um, so I'm going to put a pin in that. I was just thinking about the crosswalk thing, because I was on the planning commission. What happened to the agreement between McDonald's and Upper Augusta about putting in the sidewalk and the crosswalk when they were doing that? I remember that being part of the discussion when we were putting the plans for McDonald's, um...
That's true.
Supposed to be a cross, I mean, because I was there, I've heard it my own years, so I just, what, whatever, I thought that was part of like the agreement.
The problem is right now is where that was going to go across, is it Upper Augusta?
Yeah, but I thought part of the deal with, um, Upper Augusta was like that was what they wanted in that agreement was they wanted to make sure there was some type of crosswalk.
I don't remember Upper Augusta being involved in it.
No.
We were discussing it, we...
It was, it was a little while ago, so I might be remembering it correctly, but...
We asked McDonald's when they were, originally came to us, we said we'd like to have it part of the deal that you put a crosswalk in, but I don't know where that might have been.
I think you, I think that somebody was going to ask Upper Augusta if they would be willing to pay a portion of that fee to have something there. So was that not something they agreed upon or something that just kind of pushed to the?
No, we have to take the next step and go to Upper Augusta and discuss it with them.
Okay.
We know where we want it, and the only problem is now is that section we were going to come across, bring the entrance into their parking lot, is where they're parking cars right now. And one section is, I think, if you, uh, you park there to get your food brought out to you, that area there, which we've been disturbing that, so we'll go back to McDonald's, discuss it with them before we go to Upper Augusta, so it's still a drawn work.
I mean, I know how difficult they are to, to work with, so. So I just, I just wondered whatever happened to that, I'm like vaguely kind of remembering that it was part of like the conversation about it, so I just kind of wondered if that, um, was still, you know, in the works or anything.
There is one he set aside for that project.
Okay.
Now, we'll cover all of it, most likely not, but we can start somewhere, okay?
Any other public comment? Please state your name, sir.
Yeah, my name's Rich Stell Jr., I'm from the Sunbury Eagle, I'm trustee. Um, I've noticed over the last couple of months, um, on Third Street, all the lighting is completely out. Who's, who's in charge of that? Is that Pendott or is that, um, Sunbury's, um, responsibility?
City of Sunbury, Boss Electric was there last week, they were there today, and Steve, you were down there opening boxes up to try and figure out what is wrong with that line.
We're good at Danleys now, all random lights are up, but there's a problem somewhere else in the line. We got new Cobra heads and all those areas of Cobra heads were shot, and they're still in warranties, so hopefully we can get money back on them, but we've got new Cobra heads in. But there's another problem somewhere in the line down there by the, by, uh, the Eagles, uh, down there by Chestnut, but the one up by Danleys is working.
Okay, so you're saying that probably within the next month or so, something?
They're, they're on it, so I mean, it shouldn't, you know what I mean, they're, they ain't leaving until they figure it out.
Alright, because we'll bring, we have a meeting tomorrow and we'll bring that to the, everybody's attention, because a lot of the patrons are saying that, you know, we do have some lighting in our, on our building to, for the parking lot. But when Third Street's completely out, it's very, very dark.
Yeah, we, we, we started, we tried and changed the sensors out, it wasn't the sensors. And then it was determined that the actual light fixture itself died, well, we, we, whether it was a bad run or whatever, but, you know, we had, had ordered them in, that took a little time, and now we got, we're, we're getting down through it.
Yeah, Rich, we think the problem is at Third Market, that's where we're at right now.
Yep.
And the lights that were taken down are seven years old and they're still in the warranty, but we are trying to figure that one out, we have a problem, as we think, and, uh, uh, Fifth and Sixth and between Sixth and Seventh, we have a problem, and we think we found it today. Now, Matt, I've been dealing with, looked for vacation today, and he apologized that yours weren't done, but when he gets back, that's the target area.
Okay, I have one more question, since I'm here. Um, down there, since we're talking about the far end, down by Wawa and stuff, is there anything that we can do? Is there something that we could do with the Dunkin' Donuts down there? I noticed that there's a lot of people in the morning, gets in that, um, lane to go in there, and there's such a big line. And it causes a lot of congestion in down there, and I've almost gotten in two or three accidents down there because people swerve. I know they have a drive-through coming out, if they can keep that so they can come out, like they cannot enter there. Take it down a little bit further and enter it so they can go around to the drive-through.
Well...
I mean, put a curb or something across.
They remodeled, what, a year ago roughly?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Three, four years ago, the agreement was with Bauer Family, which owned it, they had the dual lanes, they came back, remodeled, didn't put the dual lanes, and of course, now they have sold out.
Yeah.
So, I don't know who the new owners are, change, who knows?
I don't know who they are, because I know what we have, we have a lot of concern, because even the guys that, you know, they have some issue with the line, they can go down and sit, but they're seeing the same thing just back, out of the alley, out of the street. It has, it has to stop.
They look everywhere, send me south, and I come out, and you're out there around, dude, that they're never having strip with you, too.
Rich, we can, like I said, we can look into it and see what their options are, but we'll see what we can do about it. I said, I'm not making any promises, but we can try to say, what the issue, what we're seeing, we're getting reports on, and see if they can do anything to help us out. Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Victoria Rosenfrenz, um, just have a question, uh, Councilman Ister, I spoke to Boss Electric.
Yes.
Um, they were talking, he was talking about the Cameron Hart, or...
Yes.
Poles, are they, are they going to be able to put those plugs in so then we can decorate this?
He gets back from vacation, that's on his agenda, we already have the boxes, we can stuff the poles in and stuff.
Yeah, that's, okay, I just wanted to say, because I'm working on that light project for Front Market Street, which is going very well, the citizens are just running out of pole boxes and stuff, so, like, I'll...
We, we can install more, we can install more.
So who do the twenty-dollar fundraisers and we bring the community together, let it dig, so I'm very pleased about that. Other, uh, thing I like, have a mission to do is we have bought, uh, some animatronics, uh, you're doing a new display in Gazebo, um, I, I just don't want for exception, you know, because they're my... Uh, so what I'd like to do is get an ice cream at the public mess at the stairs and back ramp, so that they can go up and take pictures, but they can't get to the animatronics, because they're going to break it. But that?
Good luck with somebody that actually...
Well, I just said, if I put three, that's stressing there, they're going to plant, whatever, then I'll just put them away and then the city won't have us.
Because they're doing stuff for Second Street, so I had to...
So I don't, no, that's my solution, unless you have, let me tell you something else.
I don't think anyone's going to have an issue with you blocking all the, help...
They're, they're going to be able to get up there, but not...
Yeah, not go in, yeah.
Well, now that's a whole nother subject up here. Anyway, okay, so Steve, Sand House, um, talks with Boss Electric, they're going to do the electric, so if you can move that first thing on the seventeenth, they still come on the eighteenth, because when I turn my heat up, I will...
Start with you, remember?
Yes.
One of them.
We need to get the electric fixed on that, um...
Are you going to have them come down and clean the car like you said, like if you...
I'll have to do up there.
Like I say, it's...
Yeah, it's just for them, they're going to, because of that cord and it's that twisting and, you know, all that stuff, so if, he said that's plenty of time for him, so that's...
Alright.
And we'll, yep, we'll just do it up there. Um, the only other thing on the agenda was, Councilman Brumwoll, that you did. You went to the, going for some city walk, but there was a citizen letter to council regarding those.
Yeah, that was something that...
That was something, I was...
Yeah, that was, yeah, that's being looked into right now, so, yeah.
Okay, I just, was that the...
Yep, nope.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other public comment? Please state your name.
Julie Vershes, I just want to thank council for approving the, uh, amended ordinance for Shade Tree, and thank you so much for approving the new members. We do have another member coming on, um, and he will be the arborist, so thank you very much. Steve, you're welcome anytime you want to come to the meeting.
So be it, but, you know what they are.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? Alright, I've adjourned this meeting.